Everyone, and welcome to the September 8, 2025 Eugene City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting remotely can do so by watching the live stream on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed on the city's Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials webpage. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period, and if you wish to speak and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form on our Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials webpage or at the entrance to this room. We will accept request to speak forms until 7:35 PM. Just a note that the clock in the room with us is a few minutes behind. These forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and to correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. The public comment period will be limited to 90 minutes or conclude by 10 PM, whichever occurs first. If the number of speakers exceeds the time that we have allotted, we encourage members, we encourage speakers to consider abbreviating their remarks so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard. For those joining the meeting remotely for the public comment period, you are welcome to email your comments to City Council, and of course, that is true of anyone speaking this evening. As a reminder, council's meeting rules of conduct apply to all attendees, both in the chamber and in the lobby, and include no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. Please keep the room quiet and respectful of all speakers, and you are welcome to wave your hands in silent support. Additionally, we encourage all those who are ill or have had close contact with others who are ill to join our meetings remotely rather than in person, and we have masks available in the lobby if you need one. In case of a medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind the staff at the west side of the room. Emergency exits are located through the double doors located at the back of the room and the double doors near the front of the room, and doors to the patio can also be used as needed. With that, I call the September 8, 2025 meeting of the Eugene City Council to order. And we begin with a land acknowledgment. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuyia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgment is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuyia Olihi. Kalapuyia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon, and continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the Our first item on tonight's agenda are ceremonial matters. Proclamations are ceremonial documents requested and signed by the mayor, and this September, we are recognizing and celebrating Substance Use Disorder Recovery Month, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and on three specific days, we are also recognizing International Day of Democracy on September 15, International Day of Peace on September 21, and the Autumn Equinox on the 22. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to join many of our residents, workers, and nonprofit organizations at the annual Lane County Recovery Event at Emerald Park in northwest Eugene, and this National Substance Use Disorder Recovery Month in 2025 celebrates the theme "Recovery is Real: Restoring Every Aspect of Life," recognizing that recovery encompasses health, home, community, and purpose, and that every person's journey is unique and worthy of support. We know from research that when people have access to recovery, recovery works, and we know that the dedicated work by our local recovery professionals and innovative programs like the Lane County Deflection Program are supportive and effective ways to meet our community's needs. These are success stories by every metric. Also in September, and on the 15th, we are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month in recognition of the rich cultures, histories, and diversity of the American, Latinx experience and community that is such an important part of Eugene, especially the contributions of the ancestors of the American citizens who came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South America, and Central America. The people of this community, with all of our shared capacity and dreams and histories, are our most valuable resource, and I encourage all community members to celebrate the incredible contributions and heritage of our Hispanic and Latinx Americans and neighbors. In the final two weeks of December, we will also celebrate our commitment to democracy and peace and celebrate the Autumnal Equinox. I encourage all Eugeneans to take a moment to celebrate the changing of the seasons, as well as our community's commitment to the democratic cornerstones of the rule of law, free and fair elections, freedom of expression, and the free press, and to honor our shared commitment to peace and against violence, hate, and discrimination. As with previous months, these proclamations are available in full on the city of Eugene's website, and I will also be speaking to them at community events throughout the month. Thank you, and that concludes our first agenda item. Our second item on tonight's agenda are committee reports and items of interest. I now open the floor for committee reports and items of interest from council. Items of interest. Oh, thank you for using the digital queue. Counselor Yeh.
Thank you. We're a little out of practice. That's okay. I had two things. First, from the Lane Area Commission on Transportation that I am on, I just wanted to share a fact that I learned at our last meeting. Since 2014, pedestrian fatalities in this country are up 48%, but in Oregon, they're up 72%. And, you know, we've been talking a lot about sidewalks recently and our transportation system, and, you know, I just found that rather alarming and something just to be aware of, that the data does support some of the things we're hearing and the way people are feeling about, about the safety on our streets. So I just wanted to share that. And the second thing I wanted to share is I know a lot of folks are here to talk about the flock camera systems, and I put in a work session poll, which has passed. We got enough votes, so we will be having a work session in the future. It has not yet been put on the calendar. That takes a little bit of time, but we will be in the future having a work session on that. So I just wanted everyone to know.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Yeh for her work session poll on flock cameras. I'm thrilled that it passed without objection, happy to cast my vote for it today, and I look forward to a robust discussion on the matter of personal privacy, safety and security, and more broadly, the surveillance state as we know it. On a personal note, my wife and I spent our wedding anniversary this August traveling to the Bay Area. We saw the final show of The Dead and Company and Giants game, and we spent most of our personal time looking at rescues at the Santa Clara Humane Society or at the San Francisco Humane Society, and I'm thrilled that when we got back from vacation, we looked up greenhill.org and fostered and then failed at fostering and adopted a brand-new love of our life, a yellow, one-year-old yellow lab shepherd named Vinny. Vinny, or Vince, is a Green Hill success story. He was found loose in Veneta or on his way to Veneta way back in March. He'd been in Green Hill for 150 days becoming, before becoming the next member of our family, and he's pure joy, and I just want to express my gratitude to Green Hill volunteers and Green Hill staff for providing all the four-legged their next, their next life and their next opportunity. Upcoming meetings that are of interest, the Human Services Commission, Monday, September 15, at noon, details lingcountyor.gov. Later this week, El Rapa, the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, meets Thursday, September 11, at 12:00 PM, elrapa-or.gov, elrapa-or.gov. Finally, the lightning show, the thunder and lightning, most likely sparked the blaze on the north side of Spencer Butte earlier today. I want to thank our Eugene Springfield Fire Team, our aerial firefighters, neighboring agencies, and first responders for your swift action, your clear communication, and your dedication to keeping our community safe from wildfire. That concludes my report, Mayor.
And Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that Counselor Yeh and I did our road show with the Northeast Neighbors Meeting the other night and had a good time doing that. I also wanted to add, Mayor, I don't, I didn't hear this, maybe you did, maybe you did talk about these other dates to celebrate here in the month of September, I just wanted to mention and say as well, that September 17 is a special day because it's Constitution Day, first of all, with ratification of our federal constitution, but it's also, for those that may remember our former colleague, it is Betty Taylor's 100th birthday on the 17th of September. So if you, if any of you have any contact with her, please be sure and wish her a very happy birthday. Thank you.
Any other council updates? I see the city manager in the queue, so seeing none. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you might recall, before you went on your summer break, we had some good conversations about our long-term financial stability. I laid out a framework for how we were going to approach that work, which includes the workshop with council. It also included a city manager committee that would be made up of technical advisors to take a look at our financial, our financials generally. So because you have a really full fall calendar, one of the things I committed to was giving you an update every, every Monday during this time. I'll just give you and the public an update on where that work is at. So over the summer, we did spend some time starting to formulate that committee and seating the members. So I was looking for folks that have a lot of technical expertise that are either in finance or operations, chief of staff-type people, economic development, and just really looked for a broad cross-section of folks that maybe are new to the conversation, not our regular folks that we see at a lot of our different committees. So happy to say that group is going to start gathering at the end of September. So we've asked them, I've asked 12 people, they all said yes, and we are working with Funk, Levis, and Associates, who are going to help facilitate and support that group and help us. They did very similar work in Springfield this year and got really good praise, so really looking forward to that. As I said, we're asking them to look at our, we're inviting them in to look at some of our expenses and operations, look at economic development as a strategy, and we've said if they want to talk about revenue, they can, but that is the last thing they'll talk about because we just had a pretty robust revenue committee that went through a lot of work. So we'll provide that information to them. They'll start at the end of September. The plan is that we'll meet pretty frequently in hopes that I have a draft set of recommendations by the end of the year that I can share with council at your last meeting, in my last meeting, on December 10. So with that, I think I'll be back on October 13. That'll be our first Monday where I can share more about how those meetings are going. So thanks.
Thank you, council and city manager, and that concludes our second agenda item this evening. Our third agenda item tonight is consent calendar. Our third agenda item tonight is Consent Calendar One: Approval of City Council Minutes, Approval of City Council Tentative Agenda, Approval of Interim Police Commission Appointments, and Approval of Voting Delegate for the League of Oregon Cities Business Meeting. If there are no questions from council, I'll turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar One.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll now take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes on the tablets in front of you. That motion passes with a vote of 8-2-0. Thank you. That concludes our third agenda item. Moving on to our next agenda item, Consent Calendar Two, which includes approval of a resolution annexing land located at 388 South Garden Way and approval of a resolution annexing land located at 301 Azalea Drive. If there are no questions from council, I'll turn to the council president for the motion.
I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar Two.
Second.
And any additional discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll now take a vote for this motion. Please enter your votes into the tablets, and the motion passes with a vote of 8-2-0. Thank you. That concludes our fourth agenda item. And the last item on tonight's agenda is the Public Comment Period. Public Comment Period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official. Staff, can you please share the list and the number of speakers that signed up to speak by 7:35 p.m. and announce the first speakers? What is that total number, Cherish?
The total number is 69.
69 people who have signed up. For those doing quick math in the room, just as a reminder to everyone, that public comment is limited to 90 minutes or to conclude by 10 p.m., whichever occurs first. And we encourage speakers to consider abbreviating your remarks to one or two minutes, so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard. And staff, I'll hand it back to you.
I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speakers this evening are Lynn Woodrich, followed by Elise Jeremko. Just a moment, Lynn.
Hello. Ah, that's better. Okay. My name's Lynn Woodrich. I'm the Active Bethel Community Co-Chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over 30 years. I live in Ward Eight. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. I sent you the link to a horrifying story about Stella Jones purchasing the Superfund site in Sheridan, Oregon, and starting up the same polluting business. I urge you to read it, because you, as our elected officials, should help us avoid a similar fate in Eugene. I would also like our city manager to read it. I managed to print out three 21-page copies that I will leave for you. EPA allowed the new buyer to use the same toxic chemicals as Stella Jones had used, including pentachlorophenol, which resulted in renewed poisonous emissions into the surrounding neighborhoods. We should ensure we prevent any such calamity in Eugene. The EPA will be having a public comment period during the decision-making process about reuse of the site, and many people have expressed a desire to have a productive use that benefits the community, including a renewable energy source such as a solar panel array. It is critical that the public health standards be finalized soon so that the community is able to benefit and public health will not be harmed prior to Georgia Baxter selling the J.H. Baxter site to another polluting business. As EPA says, "Who can make a difference is lawmakers. Call and email your representatives, asking them to allow EPA more weight in reuse decisions." EPA and DEQ can only regulate what they're given authority to, even city zoning laws make a big difference in what is allowed in reuse. To speed things along, I liked the suggestion that Counselor Leach made of narrowing the descriptions of the zone designations. The city council could accomplish this right away. The narrower zone verification requests would give the planners a way to deny the most hazardous businesses. Then maybe we could have had the legal basis to deny the fuel tank farm in the Trainsong Neighborhood. Putting protective zoning in place would have helped strengthen the city's position regarding the biofuels train-to-truck distribution center before the company took the city to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speakers are Elise Jeremko, followed by Ken Jones.
Hello. My name is Elise Jeremko. I'm a resident of Ward Three, and I would like to urge the council to cancel their contract with the Flock security cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Our next speakers are Ken Jones, followed by Naftali Renshaw. If you're able to come to the next speaker's seat, it'll save just those few extra seconds. Thank you so much.
My name is Ken Jones. I'm in Ward One, and I am here to speak on the Flock issue. I'm not real clear how the decision got made, first of all. What I've heard is that the police chief made the decision on his own, and that the police commission was not involved in it, not even notified of it, and that the oversight of the police chief is through the city manager, if I'm understanding. So I'm just wondering how it was that the kind of funding that came in for this, the grant, whatever it was, what was looked at was where that money came from. Flock is, the investors in Flock are the Founder's Fund, which is largely run by Peter Thiel and the Palantir CEO. And they're compiling all our data. The government is giving them the right to do that. And so there are cities now that are just saying, no, we made a mistake. Austin has just decided that. And that's because Flock had said that they weren't providing the data to all these other government agencies. But it turns out they were. And I'm hearing from Senator Wyden that he's got an agreement with the company that they won't provide information with any Oregon residents to any federal agencies. But how could you trust Flock to do that if they've been doing it all along? It just seems incredible that this would be decided on and that the city council here needs to review it and decide against doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Our next speakers are Naftali Renshaw, followed by Jacob Griffin.
Good evening, councilors, city staff. A few weeks ago, a 14-year-old child with disabilities was removed from this city in chains. You've heard experts on AI and security systems speak to the absolute lack of security the Flock cameras provide to local constituents. Your voters have articulated that they feel unsafe with the amount of data that is stored and shared with a private company funded by the ultra-right-wing Christian nationalist Peter Thiel, that they feel unsafe with the idea of a private AI company tracking their children and storing their faces on an international database. We know that Flock's safety network of cameras utilizing image recognition and machine learning can share data with police departments and can be integrated into predictive policing platforms like Palantir. Those of you who don't know, Palantir is a company specializing in software platforms for data mining, founded by Peter Thiel, Stephen Cohen, Joan Lonsdale, and Alex Karp. As I'm sure most of the audience is aware by now, the first three are right-wing extremists who have funded authoritarian politicians and policies that are actively harming our most vulnerable neighbors. That should be enough to cause the government of a sanctuary city to reverse course and remove the Flock cameras. However, if this doesn't, the following should. On August 27th, Garrett Langley, founder and CEO of Flock, stated, "We didn't create distinct permissions and protocols in the Flock system to ensure compliance for federal agency users. Knowing this, if the city of Eugene does not immediately halt use of Flock cameras, it is in violation of Oregon's sanctuary law and our commitment as a sanctuary city for immigrant neighbors. Counselors, fulfill your oath to the constituents of this city and get Flock out of Eugene."
Thank you, Naftali. Our next speakers are Jacob Griffin, followed by Ashley Wright.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jacob Griffin. My pronouns are he/him. I'm not going to speak directly to Flock. I think you're going to hear a whole lot of people tonight explain to you exactly what a terrible decision was made. I'm going to talk to you about the experience of being a marginalized human being in Trump's America. I'm a trans man. I live in Eugene. I'm in Ward One. I own a home. I'm on the board of Temple Beth Israel. My grandchild goes to Bethel schools. And every day of my life, I'm afraid right now. On Friday, the federal government, the government that is so desperately against any gun regulations at all, said that trans people were too dangerous as a group to own guns. I need you to think about what that means to us, because once you declare a group of people marginalized and dangerous, you can do anything to them you like. You can put them in Manzanar. You can do whatever. My only protection from my federal government are the people sitting in front of me. You're the only thing between me and disaster. The 14-year-old child that Naftali was talking about, a 14-year-old child taken out of our community in chains simply because of their ethnicity and where they were born or their parents were born. I'm in that danger. My friends are in that danger. And you're not protecting us. You're not the guardrails that you're supposed to be. Underlying everything, an elected official is to be a guardrail against fascism. That's your job. And what are you doing? There are 57 cameras, or 58 cameras, keeping track of citizens here. And when we went to the police commission, someone said, what do you care? What's a little more information? I care a great deal. My safety, my very life, depends on people who are not paying attention. I'm a former library director. I was here for a while. I can't imagine how somebody got a $315,000 grant, installed cameras, and no one in the city had anything to say about it? You're at fault, people, and you need to fix the error you have created. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Our next speakers are Ashley Wright, followed by Beck Bence.
Hi, I'm Ashley Wright. I'm in Ward Two. So I'm asking you to cancel the Flock contract. The federal government right now is doing whatever they want. They're asking for forgiveness, not permission. We've been seeing them do this for several months now. We can tell them, oh, don't use this ALPR data for, you know, tracking people seeking healthcare, reproductive, or gender-affirming. We can say, don't use it for anything related to immigration. We can tell them, don't do whatever, and they will do it anyway. So please cancel that contract. The cities of San Francisco and Berkeley have banned it, and I think we can be as smart as them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Our next speakers are Beck Bence, followed by Sarah Boom.
Hello. My name is Beck Bence, and I live in Ward Two. We're aware that Flock collects and retains vehicles' comings and goings, and we know that our data is not secure and that we can't control how that data is going to be used once we hand it over. It could be licensed and used to enforce other states' anti-abortion or anti-immigrant laws. For example, Idaho recently reinstated a, quote, abortion trafficking ban to punish adults that help minors attain abortions out of state. They could come here, and if we sell our data or if we let them take it, that could be used to punish people who are trying to get healthcare, among so many other examples. I think that is, if that was the only one, that would be reason enough to say no to Flock, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Beck. Our next speakers are Sarah Boom, followed by Reverend Rebecca Wetmore Cook.
Hi, my name is Sarah Boom. I'm a resident of Ward Seven. I forgot what the third thing we're supposed to say. Hi. You know, this might surprise you, but I actually want more cameras. I want cameras inside of each of your houses, each of your cars, all of your rooms. You know, we have to make sure that none of you sitting in here in front of me are committing any crimes at any time, because you are our elected officials, and it's very important that we make sure that you are following the laws that you are setting for us.
Sarah, I'm going to pause you for just a moment. Everyone, please, silent, waving in support, but please no sounds while people are giving testimony. Thank you.
You know, when people talk about, like, America's enemies, you know, China, Russia, North Korea, one of the first things that they talk about is the surveillance, right? Like, you know, if I told you that, you know, in North Korea, they spy on their citizens all the time, I'm sure you'd believe me. And, you know, that might be true, but, you know, just because they do it doesn't make it okay for us. And so I think until you're ready to prove that you have nothing to hide, you should stop spying on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speakers are Reverend Rebecca Wetmore Cook, followed by Dawn Hetty.
Good evening, and peace be with you all. My name is Pastor Rebecca, and I'm here tonight for the vulnerable members of our community who will be the most impacted by Flock technology but who are afraid to come and speak out. These Flock cameras are un-American and un-Christian. Our immigrant and minority communities are already under attack, and this technology is clearly being set up to surveil and target them even further. Imagine having to go to church, to work, or even to take your kid out to ice cream under the constant threat of harassment and deportation. Our neighbors are being terrorized by the current presidential administration and its personal police force, and Flock has become yet another tool being used to spark fear, to control behavior, to single out and track down brown people. The system is un-Christian because it lacks mercy and grace, targeting the vulnerable and creating a culture of suspicion. It is an oppressive burden on our community. The data collected could be shared with hundreds of agencies, including ICE, and this puts our neighbors at serious risk. To know that a trip to the grocery store or a visit to a friend could lead to unlawful arrests is a direct violation of their dignity and their peace of mind. Furthermore, these cameras are unsafe for everyone. The system has a documented error rate, leading to dangerous and traumatizing mistakes. We have seen reports of innocent people, including children, being held at gunpoint because a camera made a mistake. Such incidents erode trust in the very systems that are meant to make our community safe. This is not the type of investment we need. A subscription-based surveillance system costs our city hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. This is money that could be better spent on proven, community-based solutions like mental health response, social services, or our public libraries. We have the power to protect our neighbor's civil rights. Many cities have already restricted or banned this technology. Please do not allow this system to continue its merciless and oppressive work in our city. I urge you to put the needs of our community first. Let's invest in real safety, not tools that watch our every move and violate our core values. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speakers are Dawn Hetty, followed by Gage Emmons.
Hey, good evening. My name is Dawn Hetty. I'm in Ward Seven. I'm going to talk about heating assistance. It'll change your pace, but, boy, it's important because, you know, it's real-time stuff. So, Mayor, council, and staff, just some facts to inform or provide some context, just a few. There's 136 data centers in the state of Oregon. To be a data center, you have to use so much. To be a data center, you have to use so much, you know what I mean? They pay 30% less than we do. And, boy, we know what's happened into that power and where we expected that trend to go. The state of Oregon, they doubled heating and energy assistance from $20 to $40 million, and it all went to Portland. That's feckless. And by Portland, I mean PGE and Pacific Core. We didn't get a dime. "We" meaning the surrounding, not just E-Web. So I've got a plea, kind of urgent. It's got a modicum of success. It means a chance. There's a few moving parts. You know the Doge cuts, that corrupt whack-a-doodle thing? Well, you know what they did with the light heat money? It's still there. It hasn't been impounded nor resizzed. And by the way, that's a new word. It's R-E-S. Found that out. I like that. So their staff's gone, but the money's there. Now, maybe our U.S. senators or our representative will answer your emails about this, because they're not answering mine, but, you know, in active Congress, it's money already approved. And we could get it. Now, where does the city fall in here? We've administered this program in the past. I'm asking for some contingency and a little bit of nimbleness if some money rolls down here, and you know it's coming. And by the way, as a quick aside, that might be a heck of a criteria to consider when you're looking at your next hire, your next boss. How would somebody like that operate when they're faced with this? I know that I'm planning on being cold this winter.
Thank you, Dawn. Our next speakers are Gage Emmons, followed by Kaylee Bronson Cook.
Hi, my name is Gage Emmons. This is my first time, so I'm going to be nervous, but... Eugene Police wanted the Court of Public Opinion to approve the ALPR cameras by claiming they tracked two suspects, not criminals. That alone shows that they cannot be trusted with this power. Flock systems have repeatedly given false information across the U.S., leading to innocent people being traumatized and being held at gunpoint, and taxpayers footing the bill, not the police or the government. These cameras don't protect your data well enough, and hackers can easily access them. In Kansas, a police chief used Flock to stalk his ex 228 times. 404 Media reported one sheriff's office used over 83,000 cameras across 7,000 networks, including states where abortion is legal, to track a single person. Flock pulls from public records, data brokers, police databases, and even hacked data sets to help law enforcement identify and follow individuals. Despite all this surveillance, the system is laughably easy to bypass with a single YouTube video by YouTuber and sound engineer Ben Jordan. He demonstrates this ease, and it's not a how-to. And basic supplies, with basic supplies, anyone can bypass these systems. A laminate sheet and a Sharpie is all it takes while remaining legible to law enforcement, which this is just a mock-up of this bypass to show how easy it is. Eugene's legal fees in total have already cost residents since around 2010 around $400 to $500 each on the low end, and that's just what we can see. Many lawsuits against the city aren't publicly disclosed, but if Flock is added to the mix, that number could explode.
Thank you, Gage. Our next speakers are Kaylee Bronson Cook, followed by Will McCauley.
Hello, my name is Kaylee. I live in Ward 7. Over this summer, many community members, including many of the people behind me, have spent many, many hours at the Eugene Federal Building, which is where the ICE field office in Eugene is. Would be great to have our city leaders join us sometime. I think that because we're in a sanctuary city and because we're in a sanctuary state, that people believe that immigrants are safe here, and that is absolutely not true. In 2017, the city council unanimously passed a protection for individuals ordinance, which prevents the use of city resources to detect or apprehend individuals whose only violation of the law is that they are present in the United States in violation of federal immigration laws. However, this new Flock contract opens the door to do just that. Because Flock operates a national database, not a local system, law enforcement in one jurisdiction can search cameras, as has been mentioned, located in other jurisdictions. This design makes it easy for outside agencies, including ICE, to get access. I'm glad to hear there's a work session scheduled on this, but it's important to know that ALPRs can't just hypothetically be used against immigrants, but it is being used against immigrants. In places that have sanctuary jurisdictions, there are at least seven confirmed instances of Flock data being accessed or shared with ICE. DHS's website openly states that they are using ALPR technology to, quote, "meet the goals of the current Trump administration." And Flock recently revealed a secret program sharing access to over 80,000 cameras across the country with Customs and Border Patrol and Homeland Security Investigations. Flock's CEO has refused repeatedly to rule out contracting directly with ICE. A public records audit revealed that over 4,000 nationwide searches, including terms like immigration, ICE, or ICE warrant, were conducted between June 2024 and May 2025 using Flock's national database. Our immigrant neighbors deserve to live in our community in safety, with dignity, and without fear. Across the country, many communities have ended their contracts with Flock, and it's our turn to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Our next speakers are Will McCauley, followed by Katie Wylgus.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? My name is Will McCauley. I live in Ward 8, and I'm a substitute teacher here in the 4J School District. I've come tonight to ask you to end EPD's contract with Flock AI. There are three main reasons I believe you should do this. First is fallibility. Automated license plate readers like Flock are often wrong. Normally, this might result in a toll bridge failing to charge a driver because it misreads their license plate. Flock routinely misinterprets these incorrect reads as stolen cars or cars with false plates, flags them to law enforcement, who then wrongfully arrest the occupants. Aurora, Colorado, just paid a $1.9 million settlement over a case just like this. Make no mistake, though, when Flock makes an error like that here in Eugene, it will be the city, not Flock, who pays the settlement. Let's avoid the settlements of the future by saying no to Flock today. Next is vulnerability. Flock collects massive amounts of data on everyone, not just criminals. Where you go, when you go there, what car you drive, when you leave for work, what stores you shop at, Flock can be used to track it all. All that data is stored somewhere, held by people totally unaccountable to the American public. All it would take is one careless Flock employee clicking the wrong link, and suddenly, all this data about the citizens of Eugene would be leaked, used in unthinkable ways by hackers, stalkers, or criminals. Let's avoid the data breaches of tomorrow by saying no to Flock today. Finally, and I think most importantly, I believe EPD is blatantly violating the Fourth Amendment rights of every citizen of Eugene through the system of mass warrantless surveillance. Every person in the U.S. has the right to privacy and freedom from surveillance, period. But our rights are not only taken away by constitutional amendments, they're whittled away piece by piece, slow enough that you won't notice if you're not paying attention. Let's send a message to Donald Trump, Peter Thiel, Mark Andreessen, and every other creep that longs for a surveillance state in America. Let's tell them that in Eugene, the Constitution and the Bill of Rights still mean something. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Our next speakers are Katie Wylgus, followed by Everett O'Keane.
Good evening, Mayor Knudsen, city councilors, and city manager Madari. My name is Katie Wylgus. I reside in Ward 8. Tonight, I'm here to share a story that reflects the best of our community. Earlier today, Assistant Fire Chief Chris Paskett and EMS Deputy Chief Marcus Lay honored one of our downtown guides, Joelle Enriquez, with a lifesaving award. On July 28th, Joelle encountered a medical emergency on East Broadway. A person lay unconscious, suffering from a head wound and not breathing. Joelle quickly assessed the situation, called 911, and immediately began CPR, sustaining shallow breathing until the fire department arrived. His swift, decisive action quite literally saved a life. This moment exemplifies the vital role that downtown guides play in complementing the work of our exceptional first responders. They are not just eyes and ears on the street, they are trained, compassionate individuals who step up when seconds matter. If we want to build trust, improve safety, and foster a more responsive downtown, we must invest in expanding this program back to its original staffing level of 20. More guides means more trained professionals on the ground, people who understand how to balance public safety with empathy, who can make lifesaving decisions, and who can work in close partnership with our firefighters and police officers. Tonight, I invite you to join me in celebrating Joelle's heroic actions and the broader impact of the downtown guides. I also urge you to consider how we can strengthen this program so our sworn personnel can focus on critical calls, and our community can continue to benefit from this invaluable layer of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speakers are Everett O'Keane, followed by Patricia McPherson.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name's Everett O'Keane, and I'm a resident of Ward 7. I've come here tonight to actually echo a lot of folks' concerns around the Flock camera system, its use in deployment, and it is a very slippery slope. As of part of a August 27th report from 404 Media, Flock is seeking to partner with consumer dash cam companies to take trillions of images and incorporate them into the pre-existing Flock system. I think it's also interesting context to say that Peter Thiel's company, Palantir, for those of you who are Lord of the Rings fans, is named after the seeing stones that allow for a very evil sort of control over Middle Earth. I just think that's an interesting context for people who don't know. There is a very sinister potential for this to head in a very dark direction, and I think that it is important for us to be recognizing that. I won't spend too much time repeating what folks have already said, other than I am deeply concerned, and I also echo the concerns of many, many people in my community. I'm also a social work student, and so I work with a lot of at-risk communities, and so I'm thinking about everyone who could be impacted by this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Everett. Our next speakers are Patricia McPherson, followed by Bob Molland. Patricia, if you're on your way up, could you give me a wave? Okay, not seeing a Patricia. I will call her name one more time, but we will go to Bob Molland.
Okay. My name is Bob Molland. I'm a resident of Ward 6 and an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. First of all, I want to condemn every member of this council for their complicity in the detention of around 100 of our immigrant neighbors. These are people who were taken away after checking in at a mandatory appointment at the ICE office in Eugene. A sanctuary city in a sanctuary state has no business hosting an ICE office, and by failing to uphold the spirit of the laws of this city and state, you are all just as guilty as the fascist federal officers who tore apart families to fulfill the whims of the current presidential administration. Equally despicable is the Eugene Police Department, who attempted to assist these federal officers under the guise of responding to DHS personnel who felt intimidated by peaceful protesters demonstrating outside the federal building. It makes one wonder what must be on the conscience of a person who feels threatened by regular people simply exercising their First Amendment rights in defense of the most vulnerable members of our community. Next, I would condemn the EPD for signing a contract with a private, mass surveillance corporation and pushing fraudulent advertising after the fact, claiming a rise in crime such as organized retail theft. Where is the data for these claims? Why was there no civilian oversight? Could it be that EPD can't come up with any real numbers to support their case? The people of Eugene never even got the chance to ask. Speaking of numbers, I do have some figures about EPD. April 11th, 2024, a multi-year civilian review board showed eight cases over three years of harassment reported by female officers. September 12th, 2024, Internal Affairs reports 19 formal investigations, 57 allegations, and 10 sustained misconduct reports, 26 incident reviews, and 325 supervisor actions. The independent police auditor confirmed an 11% rise in complaints from 2023 to 2024. With that said, I call on the city council to get Flock out of Eugene, get ICE out of Eugene, defund the police, and fund our social services to prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. One last call for Patricia McPherson. All right, moving on, our next speakers are Emily Heilbrun, followed by Justin Burns. All right, not seeing...Emily's coming.
I'm Emily Heilbrun. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in Ward 1. I'm here to express my concerns about Eugene's use of Flock cameras. Although the contract says that EPD controls the data, that data is part of a large nationwide database. Flock has cameras in 48 states. Its database is huge, and although EPD owns the data, the master service agreement provides that EPD gives Flock license to use that data in a number of ways. In addition, the Flock database is accessible to many, many others across the country, including everyone else with a Flock contract and government agencies. It has been shown to have been used by ICE to track immigrants, as has been mentioned, and by a sheriff's office in Texas to track a woman suspected of having an abortion. The City of Eugene and its police department should absolutely not be part of such a database. It would be a violation of the Sanctuary Promise Act if data collected here were used by ICE to track community members. It would violate Oregon's commitment to the right to reproductive healthcare were it to be used to track someone coming to Oregon for an abortion. Use of Flock cameras is a huge overreach. They collect much more than license plates. All of us in Eugene are being tracked, and that data is widely available. This has the potential to chill political activity, and it certainly violates reasonable expectations of privacy. In these times, when the Trump administration is viciously targeting immigrants and trans people, we in Eugene absolutely should not be giving them another tool to do so. Finally, as we all know, data breaches are extremely common, so data collected about us may very well end up exposed to hackers. Please cancel the contract with Flock and have their cameras removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Our next speakers are Justin Burns, followed by Tyler Hickson.
Hi, I'm Justin Burns. I was here earlier this year talking about fascist regime, you know, getting in office here to basically take control and, you know, subjugate its people. Like, we have a pedophile as a president. Release the list. We want to see the list. Why, you know, we have a pedophile as a president, and he's declaring war on Chicago? I mean, isn't that treason? So, you know, it's said before, you guys are our guardrail, and you're here, hopefully, to protect us. There's an absence of voices in our, as our politicians. I don't hear anything about you guys coming to protect us. You know, there's, you know, this is a pretty white city, you know, pretty white state. You know, there's not that many brown people here. I would love to see more brown people here. I hope you guys would, too. Have more diverse, you know, society. I mean, better food. But how's that going to happen? Are we going to do that? I would love for you guys to talk to me, and we can talk- I would love for you guys to talk to me and we can talk about how we could figure this out because they're not going to come if there's Gestapo ICE agents kidnapping, you know, people, even little kids. You know how sad that is? There's little kids in school right now being bullied by kids that have parents that are MAGA and are racist. And there's also kids that are scared right now going to school that they don't know if they're going to get out of school and their parents are going to be in jail. I don't know if you just heard our corrupt Supreme Court, if you're brown and in public. If I go to a Flock in Home Depot and I can just get arrested because of that. I mean, where's my Fourth Amendment rights? Where's our Constitution? I think all of you, you all gave your oath to the Constitution. We need to see you guys stand up for us. It's very important. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Our next speakers are Tyler Hickson, followed by Greg McPherson.
Hello, I'm Tyler Hickson. I'm in District Three. I'm here to talk about the Flock cameras. I think a lot of people are here to talk about the Flock cameras. I don't like them. I'm not affiliated with any group that has told me not to like them. I've heard about them recently and the first thing I thought was, wow, that sounds like mass surveillance. And everything I've heard about it since has led me to believe that it absolutely is mass surveillance and not only mass surveillance, but mass surveillance in alignment with a fascist regime which we are supposed to be protected from. And I'm not a big fan about that. I've got three other people with me. I don't know if they're speaking. I don't think they're a big fan of that. I've talked with a lot of people at the University of Oregon. I don't think they would be big fans of that if I've talked to them about it, which I will probably do so if it continues to be a prevalent issue. I'll make some time for other people who have more education on the matter. I just wanted to give my...what I saw and what I continue to see.
Thank you, Tyler. Our next speakers are Greg McPherson, followed by Chrisia Rivas. All right, not seeing Greg come up. I will call for Greg one more time. Our next speaker is Chrisia Rivas.
Hi, my name is Chrisia and I'm a daughter of immigrants. I'm also a grad student and I've lived in the Springfield Eugene area my whole life. I'm here today to urge you to cancel the city's contract with Flock. This contract endangers vulnerable communities and is overall incredibly unsafe. I want to let you know how the contract with Flock is negatively affecting our immigrant community. In general, we know that mass deportation tactics used by the Trump administration have ramped up a lot. Locally even, in case you all didn't know, folks are showing, folks who are showing up to the regularly scheduled ICE checkups at the ICE field office on Seventh in Eugene, and they're getting kidnapped and sent to detention centers. This is happening right in front of us. On July 4, the Trump administration signed a law containing $170 billion for immigration enforcement-related resources. That's not all. Now they're expanding and creating a system of mass surveillance that's directing, directly targeting immigrants and their families among other marginalized communities. Local police nationwide are utilizing Flock's AI-powered automatic license plate reader system for immigration-related searches and as part of other ICE investigations. This lets federal law enforcement use a tool it doesn't have a formal contract for. A tech news outlet recently obtained records of thousands of searches made on Flock camera data. The searches include a field where officers list the purpose of their search and it turns out that many of those searches were carried out by local officers on behalf of ICE for immigration purposes, including the Enforcement and Removal Operations Division. Growing evidence highlights concerning uses of Flock data as well. In Syracuse, New York, councilors demanded to know how their LPR, their local LPR data was searched 4.4 million times by police around the country without a warrant and shared with ICE. In Evanston, Illinois, the police department revoked out-of-state access to its ALPR database after revelations that the city's data had been subject to at least seven ICE searches, despite a state law that bans data sharing with ICE. In Dallas, Texas, the police department performed a series of searches for ICE and other ICE-related terms. They weren't searching their own cameras, they were searching 6,000 different Flock camera networks. Locally, emails from police departments in Oregon show that local police are providing informal assistance to ICE as well. Along with the other community members here, I urge you to cancel the contract, please.
Thank you, Chrisia. This is one last call for Greg McPherson. All right, moving on, our next speakers are Rebecca McCroskey and Chloe Longworth.
Hi, my name is Rebecca McCroskey. I'm in the friendly neighborhood. So, there's this guy named Ben Jordan, which was talked about earlier. He's a super nerd, he's a computer geek, and I guess he's pretty famous. Anyway, he put out a video on YouTube a couple of weeks ago that blows the doors off of Flock safety. He spends over half an hour detailing the technology and its vulnerability to warrantless tracking of all kinds. Not only does it help ICE scoop up immigrants, it means that a Texas woman can be tracked for having an abortion out of state, it means your crazy ex has one more tool to stalk you, and it means us old hippies can be tracked at every protest. Because this isn't about community safety, this is data brokerage for sale to the highest bidder, stored in a leaky bucket. Ben Jordan says, and I quote, "Here's a hard truth that we all need to know and consider. If every single actor in this database brokerage theater were playing by the rules and following every single law and acting ethically, your data is still only as safe as the database the weakest security policies have or that one employee that falls for a phishing scam." He wraps up his video by saying, "I understand that you're interested in this technology because you want your community to be safer and that's a noble reason. Your law enforcement agency could use this, a technology like this in a way that is customizable, upgradable, more secure, and most importantly, built on a framework that is scaled for compatibility with admissible trial evidence." Flock safety is none of these things and we don't want them in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speakers are Chloe Longworth, followed by Drew Winters.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chloe Longworth and I use Shih Tzu pronouns. I'm here on behalf of Talc to speak against the Flock cameras, but before I do that, I want to point out that my fellow citizens that have been speaking up against the Flock cameras have been doing a really good job of giving their unique experiences to just how horrible this is. And because of that, I would like to ask everyone here that we extend the time past the normal duration for public comment if we don't reach everyone in time, because the stories that people are giving today are amazing and I'm so proud of all of us, all of them for doing that. Moving on to what I want to say, a couple of things that I wanted to mention about Flock that are unsavory, disgusting. I would hope that the city council knows this already, but just in case not, everyone should know that Flock, not the city council and not EPD, controls the data that Flock is given, which is through all of the cameras picking up things 24/7, right? And that allows government agencies or any other third parties to bypass all city policies and obtain footage directly from Flock. If you need proof for that, look at the master services agreement in the Flock contract, specifically Section 5.3. The other really important piece that I want to mention is that cameras, labeled as an ALPR, it's not an ALPR. It does so much worse than that. It does, there's so many more categories that Flock picks up. It picks up people's faces with facial recognition software. It picks up clothing, so if someone wearing the same whatever, like shirt, over and over again, same jacket, same hat, we do that a lot, it's going to recognize that in their database. Turns out, that's not what a license plate is, so what are we doing here? I don't know. I'm sick of Flock and I am tired of living in a city that is labeled as a sanctuary city and yet I've never been more terrified in my life to be here with these cameras doing mass surveillance to people like me.
Thank you, Chloe. Our next speakers are Drew Winters, followed by Liam O'Grady.
My name is Drew Winters. I'm not a resident of Eugene, I'm a resident of NoT. I just wish to share how horrifying it is to learn that Eugene, a city that I thought shared my values, would institute an Orwellian mass surveillance system. That's all I have to say, is the utter horror that when I drive into Eugene, I'm subject to mass surveillance. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Our next speakers are Liam O'Grady, followed by Scott Lambert.
Hi, my name's Liam O'Grady and I'm a resident of Conestoga Village in West Merlin. And I guess you could say, we're not in the same wagon, but we're in the same camp. And I just have a desire to try to pull together some kind of way to get to our fullest potential as a community, as a town that has so much potential. It's just that the sense of, to get there, it means that we have a, maybe have like a sense of togetherness in getting there, where to get there is part of that word that I sense a meaning for the community. The feeling is that there's some woundedness that keeps us from getting to our fullest potential and it's a metaphor that I like to use about a story where we're in these wagons, like on the Oregon Trail, but we're getting to getting there, wherever that may be. They say the promised land is a state of mind, not a physical place. So if we're getting there together and say, oh, we're getting there, kind of thing, but the arrogance, but the Oregon Trail being a combination with the Wizard of Oz here, with a wagon of mental health, maybe depicted as the scarecrow and the brain, that kind of thing, if there's the character of substance abuse could be determined as the lion with a hope for courage to say, I can say no, risk losing my friends so I can have my health and not be dependent on substances. And if there's a wagon, this is about the body of the wound, like if homelessness was depicted as a clown and he could be asking the wizard for security because they need to secure the perimeter or some kind of place. Anyway, the hope to get to our fullest potential if we don't have these wounds, like deep-seated kind of wounds, keeping us from reaching that as a collective, because the more the merrier, the more power is won. If we did it together, we'd be able to achieve some really good kind of opportunities for gratitude. So if we have spiritual common ground in these kind of things, that'd be the most ideal kind of sense of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Our next speakers are Scott Lambert, followed by Rob Sheldon.
My name is Scott Lambert. I'm a PhD candidate in physics at the University of Oregon and four-year resident of Eugene. I live in Ward Two, also a member of GTFF Local 3544. I want to say, this, the surveillance, the Flock system, like, there is, at the beginning of this meeting, I mean, celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month, National Democracy Day, National Substance Recovery Day, when we've defunded cahoots in favor of a program like this, Peace Day, when children are being kidnapped from our community, it just rings a bit hollow that we're saying these words when this is what's happening right now, when our government has failed to stop this. I also want to say that, he's not here tonight, but I have a friend in the physics department who is of indigenous heritage originally, his heritage is from Mexico, and what he says is that the deportations that are happening right now, this is an indigenous rights issue. The people who are migrating to this country to work, they are the descendants of indigenous peoples who have been fighting for their freedom and self-determination for 500 years. So if we care about indigenous rights, like, we need to get rid of these cameras right now. The other thing I wanted to say is that this system, this is a structural failure of our local government. The fact that this was able to get through without being consulted, without any members of the public being consulted, without any representatives of the public being consulted, my faith in the democracy, the democratic institutions of our town is at an all-time low. This should never have happened. Yeah, please don't play into the Trump surveillance state. Please don't let these cameras continue to surveil us. Thank you. Cancel the Flock contract, remove the cameras immediately.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speakers are Rob Sheldon, followed by Bailey Gilmore.
Hi, good evening. First off, before I say anything else, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and for having the courage to speak. You're all super awesome. So, I had my very first city council meeting in my life on June 23 and I spoke about some of the structural and technical issues of the system at that time. One of the issues that I raised there was that the system was designed to be able to allow third-party access anytime without an organization's knowledge or consent. I thought it would be at least a year before that would turn out to actually happen, but in fact, that was found to be happening just a couple of weeks ago. Flock, in response, when they got caught out about it, said, "Oh, oops, we were not supposed to do that." Chief Skinner continues to defend the system. He made some comments just recently on the system that were both demonstrated that he still doesn't understand the technology very well, but also were extremely dismissive of the issues that the community is raising. I want to emphasize that the issues that the community are raising tonight are well-founded. They are realistic, they are founded in things that are actually happening. This is not a bunch of hypotheticals. So, yeah, you have, I imagine, a somewhat challenging position where you're getting a lot of contradictory information from different sources. My ask is that you reach out to some subject matter experts wherever you may find them and talk to them about it as you are exploring the community's concerns raised here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob. Our next speakers are Bailey Gilmore, followed by Andrew Simran.
Hello, council. My name is Bailey Gilmore and I live in Ward One. I'm here to speak out against the Flock cameras. Given the gravity of the concerns that you have heard tonight and over the past few months, I am calling on you to act tonight to immediately halt the use of the system while you investigate. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. Our next speakers are Andrew Simran, followed by Nicholas Di Battista.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Knudsen, city manager. My name is Andrew Simran and I reside in the River Road neighborhood. I'm here to speak about the ALPR system that's been implemented in the city. I have a lot of concerns, many of which have already been voiced. I work in the cybersecurity industry and value my personal privacy and this is something that the city of Eugene should not be pursuing and the city should immediately cancel the contract with Flock Security. It's not in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speakers are Nicholas Di Battista and Jettie Eddy.
Hello, first time, obviously. Thank you for having me. I think a lot was said about Flock. Just a real quick comment on the Doge cuts hitting the most vulnerable in our community. I work with an independent group to provide food outreach through local church food boxes. When reaching out to Food for Lane County to expand this effort, we reached some understandable legal roadblocks, possible fraud risk, but what was more notable was the dismay in the voices of the admins I spoke to regarding the national budget cuts. Just wanted to make that note. I'm not sure anything unique can be said about Flock that hasn't already been said, but in lieu of you... but in lieu of uniqueness, perhaps just a little more. In the city of Eugene, the city of Eugene, rather, believes it is necessary to gather license plate data on residents and visitors, then that responsibility should rest with the city itself, not a private corporation. A city-run data center funded and accountable to the people is the only way to ensure that this information is managed under public oversight rather than corporate policy. Ceding control of citywide surveillance to private vendors like Flock Safety is more than a budgetary decision. It's a choice to outsource democratic accountability. When our police and city leaders say the data belongs to the city, but the servers and systems are owned and operated by corporations, we are already one step removed from direct public control. Contracts change, companies are bought and sold, and promises made today can be rewritten tomorrow. Each step we take towards relying on private-held surveillance infrastructure moves us closer to an Orwellian future where civic freedoms are mediated by opaque, profit-driven entities. If the city insists on using these tools, then it should invest in publicly-controlled systems, transparent audits, and democratic oversight. Our safety should not come at the cost of surrendering community control to a private corporations. And lastly, Orwell stated that if you want a picture of the future, imagine a boot stamping on a human face forever. And while Orwell was forward-thinking in his warning of state control, I believe he could not have predicted how ingrained private corporations would become in this process. Remember, the boot is forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Our next speakers are Jettie Eddy, followed by Clara Raymond.
Hello. My name is Jettie. I'm a part of Ward Eight, and I am the founder of the Barefoot Defenders. In case you don't know who the Barefoot Defenders are, we work alongside our unhoused neighbors. We feed people every week. We provide court support, defense during sweeps. We make heaters so people don't freeze to death, and we even live alongside folks so that we can fight with them. I am here because I care about this community and because I know firsthand how dangerous the Flock cameras are. Let's be clear. Flock cameras are not just a license plate reader. They are tracking devices. They log when, where, and how often your car is seen, building a map of your life. And that data doesn't just vanish. It is shared, stored, and weaponized. I know this because I have been targeted by EPD. I follow the law. I check land maps. I drive carefully, but I've still been harassed, stalked, and ticketed simply for helping people survive. Last year, after the city swept a camp four times in five days, I interrupted a city council meeting out of sheer desperation, not knowing it was illegal. And I became one of the first people in 25 years to be arrested for disrupting this very council. When I asked the police commission how they'd stop the abuse of authority or abuse with these cameras, they did not reassure me. In fact, EPD mocked me. They said, "These cameras are just a gotcha tool for criminals." Well, I'm not a criminal. I am a neighbor. I'm an advocate, and I've been treated like the enemy. And if this is happening to me, it can happen to anyone who dares to resist injustice in this city. Make no mistake, it is not just about solving crime, it is about control. These cameras will be used to intimidate advocates, outreach workers, and anyone who challenges the authority. You have the power to decide on whether Eugene will be a city of care or a city of surveillance, a city that uplifts its people or one that crushes dissent. We are all done being intimidated, so I'm here to say no more surveillance state in Eugene, no more criminalizing compassion, no more turning neighbors into suspects. And in the words of the late Candace King, "We must fight so that we can win."
Thank you, Jettie. Our next speakers are Clara Raymond, followed by Athena Aguiar.
Hey, I'm Clara Raymond. I live in Ward One. Who is this for, you guys? Like, because it's not for us. Like, I would hope that, you know, you're all elected to serve us, and I would hope that a lot of the issues that have been being raised were already things that you guys were aware of, like, prior to this meeting. I would hope so. Like, I knew about them. And if you guys are deciding about the Flock cameras, Jesus, like, I would hope you guys know about that. This isn't helping our homeless neighbors that need services. They need cahoots. They don't need to be tracked by the cops. This isn't helping our immigrant neighbors that are like vital parts of our community. This isn't helping people that need reproductive health care in Oregon, even from outside of Oregon. I am so proud to live in a state where anybody that needs the health care that they need can get it regardless of where they are from, and you are threatening that with these cameras, and that's devastating to me. Like, the residents of this city already don't trust the cops to respond appropriately when they are needed, and so I'm not sure what giving them more information is going to do to serve us. So I just want to, like, reiterate how much this is a massive threat to Eugene and its community, and our safety, and our vitality as a city where we all care for each other. And you guys already know all of this, though, so like, I'm just asking you to, like, serve us, the community here. Thanks.
Thank you, Clara. Our next speakers are Athena Aguiar, followed by Jason Sides.
Hello, councilors, mayor. My name is Athena Aguiar, I'm a resident of Ward Five. I want to echo what the other guy from GTFF said about how this feels like a structural issue with the local government. I, after you guys do your work session and ban Flock immediately during the work session, can you please consider, like, what the role of each of you and the city manager and the police chief is in all of this, and how it can be prevented next time? Like, what... Should there be a person whose job it is to, like, tell you guys that a new police thing is happening? That maybe like one of the, like, one of the councilors on Police Commission could be in charge of that? Or like, one of the people in the independent police auditor's office can be in charge of making sure you guys know what's going on and everything is happening democratically? Or change the code? I don't know. I'm just throwing stuff out there right now. I clearly don't have anything prepared. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Athena. Our next speakers are Jason Sides, followed by Seth May.
Hi, my name is Jason Sides, resident of Ward Two and faculty at University of Oregon. Quickly, I would like to say that today, after a secretive process that did not include consultation with the UO community, University of Oregon administration just laid off 117 employees, including career faculty, GEs, classified staff, and other campus workers, and eliminated 59 job openings, also known as vacant positions. As of right now, there are 195 job openings listed on UO's HR website, careers.uorgan.edu. Obviously, there are more job openings at UO than employees whose positions they just eliminated. Why? Why lay off so many people from their livelihoods when they could have eliminated so many more job openings? But I came here mainly to talk about Flock. I'm calling on you, Eugene City Council, to cancel Eugene's contract with Flock and ban any further ALPR systems in Eugene. Furthermore, you should immediately vote to immediately turn off Flock cameras until you've had time to properly consider it at your Flock working session. Every second those cameras remain on endangers our immigrant neighbors. As others tonight have already noted, Flock is an unscrupulous, out-of-state corporation that we cannot trust. Lawsuits due to Flock misidentifications, which are very common, have left cities liable for huge payouts, like the $1.9 million settlement paid by Aurora, Colorado. Eugene police argue that our data is safe, that they have flipped the switch and shut off the spigot of information sharing with ICE and other out-of-state law enforcement. But our data, our minute-by-minute whereabouts, are still being collected onto servers managed by a company headquartered in Georgia, begging to be exploited, leaked, or outright illegally acquired by a federal administration, unbothered by concerns about the law. If you think our intimate data about our minute-by-minute movements through our city is protected by some signatures on paper, I have a bridge to sell you. It is appalling that the unelected chief of police and unelected city manager felt it was an appropriate use of their unelected positions to share the minute-by-minute whereabouts of every inhabitant and every voter of Eugene with an out-of-state, unscrupulous corporation, and likely with the federal administration and goon squad that has shown no hesitation tearing apart families and snatching innocent people off the streets and whisking them away in unmarked vans. Our immigrant neighbors are all loved and vital members of our community, and they are made especially vulnerable by Flock around-the-clock surveillance. Please correct this wrong, turn off the cameras tonight, cancel the Flock contract, and enact a forever ban so that ALPRs can never be undemocratically installed in Eugene again.
Thank you, Jason. Our next speakers are Seth May, followed by Misty Bowman.
Good evening. My name is Seth May, a resident of Ward Two. I will be reading portions of a letter from Mary Ann Duggan, Senior Civil Attorney Director of the Civil Liberties Defense Center, addressed to the city council and mayor. Civil Liberties Defense Center has been reviewing the Eugene Police Department's recent rollout of the use of Flock technology. This surveillance technology is an uncostful dragnet that violates the Fourth Amendment right to privacy as well as the First Amendment protections for assembly, political organizing, and expression without spying eyes of government monitoring those activities. We want to be, to specifically point out that the Eugene Police Department's use of Flock almost certainly violates Oregon Revised Statute 181A250. The statute prohibits all law enforcement agencies from collecting or maintaining information about the political, religious, or social views, associations, or activities of any individual or group unless such information directly relates to an investigation of criminal activities and there are reasonable grounds to suspect the subject or may be involved in a criminal conduct. In other words, it is illegal for Oregon law enforcement to collect or maintain any data about people's activities without reasonable suspicion of a crime. Flock Technologies conducts a vast and ongoing data grab of information about people's comings and goings, their license plate numbers, the make and model of vehicles, and other detailed information. Much of this information is highly sensitive, giving rise to concerns about political targeting. This information is collected and maintained regardless of any connection to an investigation of criminal activities, and regardless of whether there are reasonable grounds to suspect the subject of the information is or may be involved in criminal conduct. Therefore, it is our opinion that when EPD, as an Oregon law enforcement agency, implements Flock, it is violating Oregon law. Springfield is conducting, or current, Springfield is currently reconsidering the use of Flock. We urge Eugene City to immediately halt the use of Flock technologies to avoid further violation of the US Constitution and Oregon statutes, and expensive and protracted litigation to uphold the constitutional rights of everyone living in and traveling through Eugene. Thank you. I will also be providing you with full-printed copies of the letter.
Thank you, Seth. Our next speakers are Misty Bowman, followed by Stan Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward Seven, and I'm here to protest the Flock cameras in the city. I'd like to read a quote. It comes from "They Thought They Were Free," The Germans, 1933 to 1945, by Milton Mayer. "Suppose that you have heard secondhand or even firsthand of an instance in which a man was abused or tortured by the police in a hypothetical American community. You tell a friend whom you are trying to persuade that the police are rotten. He doesn't believe you. He wants firsthand, or if you got it secondhand, at least secondhand testimony. You go to your original source, who has told you the story because of his absolute trust in you. You want him now to tell a man he doesn't trust, a friend of the police. He refuses, and warns you that if you use his name as an authority for the story, he will deny it. Then you will be suspect, suspected of spreading false rumors against the police. And as it happens, the police in this hypothetical American community are rotten, and they'll get you somehow." Unquote. I've read a lot in that book that reminded me of America's ongoing situation in Washington right now, but none reminded me more of what's happening in Eugene than that passage. "We come to this council as friends, telling stories of the EPD abusing minorities and homeless people, and you tell us it's not enough, that you need firsthand testimony of this behavior. Or you turn to your friends and the police, and they deny these stories, and that's sufficient for you. It's exhausting and frustrating. Flock cameras have already been abused by police officers in this country, and these cameras have made mistakes that have endangered lives. Remove the Flock cameras lest authoritarianism take hold of this city." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Misty. Our next speakers are Stan Taylor, followed by Bob Clifford.
My name is Stan Taylor. I'm from Ward One. I am the leader of Eugene's, Indivisible Eugene Springfield. And as the leader of Indivisible Eugene Springfield, we are members of the activist coalition of Eugene Springfield, which now has 20 organizations, activist organizations, that are part of that coalition. I can tell you, all of the members of that coalition oppose Flock in Eugene. I want to talk to you about two things, the Flock in Eugene and the sighting of an Amazon distribution center in Eugene. Again, I will tell you that Indivisible Eugene Springfield started with 10 or 20 members in December and now has over 1,000 members. And we are opposed both to the Flock cameras and to the sighting of Amazon Distribution Center in Eugene. I know all of you are old enough to have read Orwell's 1984 and Ray Bradbury's... Fahrenheit 451. Those were warnings of how surveillance can be used to create an authoritarian society. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing that happening here. And there are plenty of stories that tell you it's the truth. The other thing is that for Amazon to go in, again, the thing that's in common with the Flock is that it's been adopted by this city or allowed to come through, or is going through, without any public oversight. If you look at the Amazon Center, the city has allowed these plans to go forward even though the architect signed a non-disclosure agreement to describe who they're representing and who's going in on this center. We need to stop both the Flock and Amazon in Eugene.
Thank you, Stan. Our next speakers are Bob Clifford, followed by Sam Edwards.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Bob Clifford, and just say no. I found out about this this morning, and I am highly concerned, not only for you, but for everybody in this room, for everyone in this community, and in the state of Oregon, and in the United States of America. We are under unprecedented attack. When I went to school, America was a land of immigrants. That is how we were formed. And we are tearing the very fabric that built this country apart. I know that there's probably an awful lot of pressure from Washington to do a lot of things, but violating people's rights, invading their privacy, selling their data, all you have to do is look at the credit cards in your wallets to know how much of our data is being shared, where we go, what we do, where we spend it. We don't need to be tracking people's health care, endangering the poor immigrants of this community. I know one person in particular who was born here and of Hispanic nature, who is fearful that he will get somehow picked up. When a member of the community where he was born is talking about those things as part of a conversation, this is alarming to me. It should be alarming to each and every one of you. And I don't know who controls the switch for this Flock, but I would encourage you to get it turned off right away. Peter Thiel and Mark Andreessen are venture capitalists from Silicon Valley. They're in it for the money. Believe me, they are in it for the money. Just say no, please. And I'm glad that you're having a work session on this.
Thank you, Bob. Our next speakers are Sam Edwards, followed by Jacob Tru.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Sam Edwards of Ward Eight, and I'm speaking on Flock. Before I begin, I would first like to echo all of the concerns of my dear neighbors so far on this system. They are all very valid. I work in computer security. And you know, designing a computer system that can stand up to hackers is a bit like building a big evil stronghold that can resist raiders. Here are three major principles that we use. First, the outer wall. We actually want that to be as small as possible. Big walls are no good. Not only are they hard to patrol, but every brick in the wall is a potential weak point. Small is simple, and simple is strong. In the biz, we call this attack surface reduction. Second, the outer wall isn't the only wall. We also build interior walls, structures, and checkpoints, too. These really frustrate intruders by slowing them down. These really frustrate intruders by slowing them down. In the biz, we call this defense in-depth. The last concerns the castle guards. You actually want them to have as little access as necessary to carry out their duties. This reduces the potential for harm in case one of them is compromised or impersonated. We call this the principle of least privilege. Now let's apply these to Flock. Flock operates a single nationwide surveillance database with tens of thousands of authorized users. That is a mammoth of an attack surface. If just one of those accounts, one, has a common password like 123456, or password, then it's only a matter of time before a hacker finds it and guesses their way in. Boom, outer perimeter breached. Well, how about defense in-depth? Now, I admit that this is okay on paper. In principle, you can only access the cameras that are shared with you. But unfortunately, the reality of this broad third-party data sharing means that that principle stays on paper. And finally, Flock completely disregards the principle of least privilege. There are no system-wide measures to ensure that officers can only access the system from department equipment, or during on-duty hours. And that's just to name two examples. My friends, we've been sold a sieve and told it's watertight. And every time we point out the holes, they slap on another layer of duct tape and say, there, it's fixed, this time for sure. Are we going to let them get away with that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam. Our next speakers are Jacob Tru, followed by Jessica Jane.
Hi there. I'm Jacob Tru. I live in Ward One. Happy to see you all again. I wear many hats in the community, but I'm here to talk about public safety, two topics. First topic, we still don't have cahoots back on the streets here in Eugene. Commend City Council for passing the resolution, says that we'll have a work session before the end of September about getting cahoots back, but we have not seen that scheduled yet. We absolutely need cahoots back. Cahoots is the best of Eugene and Springfield. The workers with decades and decades of combined experience stand ready to serve our community, and Willamette Valley Crisis Care is ready, but we need a signal from council that an RFP will be issued soon, hopefully by the end of the month. I also want to acknowledge that, based on evidence reviewed, City Council is not the cause of us losing cahoots. So, yeah, I'm acknowledging that. City Council can absolutely be the reason we could, but City Council can absolutely be the reason we get cahoots back. I mean, wouldn't that be great? We have a, we've had, by my count, thirty-two people up here yelling at you. Wouldn't it be nice to have a bunch of people saying, hey, you got cahoots back? We love you. Like, that sounds pretty good to me. So, yeah, please encourage staff to issue an RFP this month. We can't afford to lose any more workers, and we can't afford to leave cahoots off our streets. So pivoting to the second topic, which is, as you might have guessed, it's Flock. You do, you really do need to cancel that Flock contract. I welcome and commend the work session that you already got scheduled for that. Really do appreciate that. I want to echo some of the, some of the suggestion by folks that canceling it right now while we're looking at it might be a good idea. I think you should consider that. You couldn't do that tonight. And based on the police chief's comments, the police seem to be under the false impression that these AI surveillance devices only capture license plates. That's just not an accurate description of what the technology actually does. These cameras capture trucks, cars, trailers, bikes, pedestrians, dogs, and even cats. I don't know about you, but my cats don't have license plates on them, so I don't know why they're capturing cats if they're only ALPRs, only automatic license plate readers. I don't want to belabor the point. You've had thirty, thirty-two folks and counting who are up here talking about Flock, so I'll give some more time to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Our next speakers are Jessica Jane, followed by Erin Kirkman.
Sorry, I'm so nervous. I'm here to ask you to cancel EPD's contract with Flock. Communities across the country are pushing back against installation of these very cameras in their towns because they understand what's at stake. The erosion of privacy, trust, and the expansion of a police state under a growing fascist regime. Implementing such a system is not a decision to make lightly. It deserves thoughtful, intentional consideration, weighing the true benefits against the very real costs, which did not happen. EPD actually did the exact opposite. They went ahead and sneakily installed these cameras without the proper oversight and without a single consideration for how they might impact the individuals in our communities. So we have to ask, is retail theft really worth this sacrifice? These cameras are not a real solution. At best, they're a Band-Aid slapped on a much deeper problem. The real drivers of theft are financial insecurity, lack of access to food, inadequate mental health support, and social instability. Individuals who have stability and access to these resources do not need to steal to survive. These cameras won't fix these problems. They only give the illusion of safety while normalizing surveillance. We're talking about a temporary fix that fails to address the actual issue while permanently sacrificing our privacy, damaging community trust in our local democratic institutions, and moving us closer to an authoritarian police state. That's not a trade-off we should accept. I want to echo a previous request to remove the cameras that were installed without proper oversight while you continue to investigate and ultimately cancel the contract with Flock. I also ask that the meeting be extended to allow for as many comments as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next speakers are Erin Kirkman, followed by Archer Boyd.
Hello, my name is Erin Kirkman. I've lived in Eugene for nineteen years. I currently live in Ward One. I've seen a lot of very helpful services throughout the community, and I've seen a lot of missteps in our community. And I would like to briefly touch on the budget issue at hand with the Flock camera, like many other people have mentioned. NPR Oregonian and the Register Guard reported a $11.5 million shortage in our budget, and I just cannot see how this is a justified use of our taxpayer money, especially when cahoots has lost eighty percent of their staffing. Cahoots is a really amazing program. I know everyone has mentioned it before. I personally have greatly benefited from having cahoots in our community. I live downtown, and it has provided so much safety for me in very serious situations. I also think that it is a great misuse of taxpayer money when there is this misconception that illegal immigrants do not pay taxes, and that they are not contributing to our community, and they are. And we have seen, it's not just a speculation that these Flock cameras are being used for the intention of deporting legal and illegal members of our community. It is, it's been documented. It is a fact. And any risk to our most vulnerable members of our community is not worth the hypothetical good that it could do. I deeply care about pedestrians. I deeply care about the Hispanic heritage in our community, and substance abuse. And I do not believe that this is an act that is really reflecting those beliefs. I also believe that this is violating my Fourth and First Amendment rights, and I think that the best course of action is to terminate it immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. As a note, the ninety-minute public comment will end at 9:18. Our next two speakers are Archer Boyd and Dani Huffsmith.
Hello, my name is Archer Boyd, and I'm here to speak against the use of mass surveillance in Eugene. I am a middle school teacher in our local public school district, and as a knowledgeable source of state standards, I feel compelled to remind our council that Oregon students are required to learn about the Constitution in eighth grade. Since some of us have clearly been out of school for a while, I will remind you of our basic laws, structures, that protect our civil liberties as citizens of the United States. The Fourth Amendment protects people from unlawful search and seizure depending on the intrusion of individual rights and public safety. I cannot imagine a greater intrusion on individual rights and public safety than mass surveillance. Eugene, Oregon proclaims itself a sanctuary city, and yet there has been an undemocratic decision made that directly contradicts that claim and stance. In this time, when pags wearing masks, so-called ICE agents, are dragging neighbors from their homes, carrying out state-sanctioned violence in our communities, and terrorizing our families, you have decided to curtail our civil liberties and partner with a private company using public funds, potentially enabling these federal powers to exploit this data to carry out further violations and harm. And if the words of these people here tonight don't convince you, I invite you to sit in my classroom and look at the faces of the people who will be impacted most by your decision. And for their sake, I hope you begin to understand the Constitution as well as they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Archer. Our next and final speaker is Dani Huffsmith.
Good evening, council, mayor, manager. I am Dani. I live in Ward Two, and I think it's fitting that I'm the last speaker because I'm going to end with a song to celebrate the incredible resistance and resilience of this community. The song is called "We Resist." We, and if people want to join in, I'm okay with that. We resist holistically in community, reaching, building. Together 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 we resist holistically in community, reaching, building.
Thank you, Dani.
Thank you, everyone. Please stay with us and adhere, even as we've extended what would be typically our operating agreements in this room to allow for that final public comment, which became a final public song. That is not within our typical operating behavior within this room. And I did not, did not interrupt the speaker and did not interrupt the final public comment this evening. But with that, we will be closing public comment for tonight to allow also for any comments from council in response to what we heard this evening. Any comments from council? Counselor Yay.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your questions, your concerns about the Flock system are reasonable. I want to say that first. I will admit that I did not educate myself to the level that I should have, and I'm learning a lot right now, along with many folks in our community who are in a place where they also feel like they don't have the information they need to be able to make a decision, which is why I thought that a work session would be really valuable for us. I think folks will learn a lot from it. Even some of us that are partially educated will learn even more as we go through this system. And I also want to say that it's, in today's America, it is not unreasonable to be afraid. And if we are not, if, if, if I, I shouldn't speak for others in council, are not doing what we need to be doing, you should be here reaching out and being angry. And I hope that you continue to come and tell us when we don't do things the way we should, when you have concerns, when you have questions, and keep those avenues of conversation open. Our emails are a great way to address, not everyone can come here, and everyone has the privilege to come here and speak. So please, when you talk to people in the community, encourage them to send us emails as well. And I guess that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments from city council to close this evening? I will, I will add to the comments that have been just briefly shared, that I know that this body does appreciate all of the feedback that we hear at public comment, not just this evening, but every evening. I have been your mayor since just the beginning of this year, and I know how much this body values this opportunity for dialogue. Just the existence of public comment in this way is consistent with our community values. This is not how every place in our state or in our country does dialogue with the community in a very open way, and I think that it's important, especially now, more than ever, for us to feel like we are in conversation with one another about how our community is walking into the future. I will also just offer my appreciation to everyone who came this evening, also to our staff, and to all of the people who work with the city as an organization to implement and try to guide our city's policy work. If there is an issue with that policy, as was stated by many people this evening, that's a conversation that needs to come back to this body, to city council and the mayor, for open discussion in our community. And please be careful, as we're continuing this discussion, to not lump together bad intents, especially not lumping together the efforts that we are making locally in this community, to be values-driven and to be consistent with the local laws that we have in place that protect individuals. As we are doing that work, please, just in your own conversations, take into account that this context is different than what you are seeing in many other places around the country. And you have a group of elected leaders who are accountable to you and to our Constitution, and this issue will be back in front of us again shortly. With that, and seeing no other comments from council, I will now close the September 8th, 2025 city council meeting, and we are adjourned. Thank you.